Okay, welcome to the Monday, February 1st, 2016 meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. We are hereby called to order Ms. G.
Mr. John.
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Meeks.
Here.
Ms. Rogers.
Here.
With Mr. Wodisca.
Here.
And we expect Mr. Rankin. Ms. Tietz is absent.
Okay. Motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Adoption of the agenda, moved and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Excellent. Receipt of petitions. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Which we'll come to, so we won't do that in old business. Actually, maybe we will, because I see that Ms. Mester is not here. Although, do we need?
I think Ms. Mester will be coming up at 8:00. She's downstairs in the city council work session, so if we could take care of things ahead of that.
We'll do it. Okay. We're going to skip item 6A and move right into 7. Other business. Nope. Approval of minute. We have none. All right. Planning Commission reports.
Come on, Lyndy, you've got to.
Oh, good. Okay. Let's see, can I talk for a whole half an hour?
No.
Why not? Why not?
Still no.
Oh, jeez.
Five minutos.
Anyway, tomorrow night, the CACT is having a joint meeting with EDA, and the information for their meeting is very interesting. They're going to be discussing shuttle service, bike share, improved parking, traffic calming, play streets, pace car program, which I have nothing, no idea about that, walkability, bikeability, streetscape, and then also, new business, they're going to have a report from member Bob Young about benches, bike racks, trash, and recycling cans on West Broad Street. They are going to be following, as I understand it, they're going to be following the original streetscape plan with all the furniture, but they've mapped out where they think it should be placed, and they're going to be paying for it.
Throughout the whole city?
No, just the 100, 200 blocks. And so they've broken it down into the amount of money that the bike racks cost and the trash cans, and it came to about $35,000, I think. Right, Paul? Yeah. And so that's, they're going to, you know, something that I know that there was a subcommittee that was going to look at that, but nothing's being changed, or no difference in proposals. But they have, what I'll do is, I think that when Ms. G contacted us, it was only with the agenda, and all the items, other items are all listed on their original thing tomorrow. So if you don't have it, I'll email it, forward it over to you, and then you can forward it to people, so you can just see what they're proposing, because they've got a lot of photographs of placement and things like that.
Okay. Anyone, yes?
Just a question. I'd like to know if the planning director is involved in reviewing those things that are, the street furniture. Have you seen what they're proposing?
Yes, I have, and actually, Paul Stoddard can give you a more detailed update on that, because he has been involved with the fixtures and so forth.
Absolutely. Thank you. Members of the Planning Commission, so several months ago, EDA member Bob Young reached out to staff for support in helping to develop a proposal to provide EDA-funded street furniture along West Broad Street from the stretch of the intersection with North Washington out to the intersection with Oak, I believe. And so the public work staff, planning staff, Bob Young, walked that portion of West Broad Street, identified some locations for street cans, for bike racks, for benches. We developed cost estimates, a few maps to go along with them, and provided that to the EDA member.
Okay. Anyone else?
The thought on this is to try to do something this spring, and Paul, I don't know if you want to mention timing, but when the weather breaks and we have a gap, when crews will be able to do this work, and it can be visible in a time period where people are getting outdoors again and using streetscape and the city sidewalks.
Yeah, the planned action is consistent with sort of thoughts from other comprehensive plans, as well as sort of thoughts within the draft West Broad Street Small Area Plan, that idea of mixing short-term actions with long-term priorities. So looking for things that are relatively simple to do, fairly low-cost, quickly implement, don't require a lot of engineering work, and so they make something nice in the immediate term, but then they have a strategic value that they connect to future goals. For example, updating the entire West Broad Street streetscape, bringing it up to what was expected with the 1985-87 plan. So the elements, as Commissioner Hockenberry mentioned, are consistent with what's in that adopted plan. So the benches are the same, the street cans are the same, the bike racks are different, but those are consistent with the adopted Bicycle Master Plan.
Okay.
I have a question. Would you repeat that part of what you just said about doing things in small, you know, doing small things that would improve things without spending a lot of money?
So streetscape can be very expensive. It's several hundred thousand dollars per block to take care of the new street trees, the utility undergrounding, the brickwork. The street furniture, in contrast, is about $35,000, and that's for, I think, a collection of nine benches, 13 bike racks, seven pairs of street cans. And so that will be a set of furniture that will be arrayed across a six or seven-block stretch within the course of a few weeks' time for installation. So it's $35,000 in a few weeks' time to make a noticeable impact, the idea being that that then sets the tone for further investment later.
Right, but one of, what caught my ear was, you're saying, concept in the Small Area Plan and in the Comp Plan of doing things to improve areas that were small incremental things that didn't cost too much. Isn't, am I paraphrasing that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm not actually asking about the streetscape and the benches and things like that. I was just thinking that with regard to that major, I think it's a $500,000 expenditure for a small park there, when the City, the Planning Commission was reviewing that, we were suggesting that a lot of things could be done to that park that would not cost nearly so much, and yet would make it much more attractive. And I was just wondering why the two things don't seem to agree.
Well, I think there are different ways you can go with any sort of urban design. I think that the park that you're referring to at the 100 block, this, I think, from sort of the sort of city general fund perspective, is being treated as a grant-funded project. So in this case, the grantor is the Economic Development Authority, and this is something that they would like to see pushed forward, and I think that would be sort of a seed project for the larger view within the downtown POA, which is an expanded plaza area running through that entire park.
Yeah, I do remember the plan. I think that the Planning Commission's perspective on that was that we didn't need to go that far with that particular plan, and I think it was pretty, you know, most everyone questioned that expenditure. And particularly since we're talking about that entire area being redeveloped, it seems a little bit excessive to put that much money into someplace that's something that's going to be changed fairly soon.
For the Commission's discussion tonight, after Ms. Mester's presentation on the CIP, will be a work session on the CIP, and parks is one of the topics for tonight, so that might be the right time to talk about that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Just in addition, I think it's all with the point of view of, with the money that eventually will be spent on lighting and everything in the downtown area, to just get everything up to speed as quickly as possible, and just the fact that, you know, if you think about it, there's no places, very few places along the way that have the benches or anything like that.
Right, no, I completely get it.
And so, again, I think that small implementation is a really good thing, and just the fact that so often it takes so much time to get stuff done, and that this is a good way to really put a punch in for the downtown area, which I think is. I agree, Lyndy. Yeah.
Okay. We may need you, Mr. Stoddard. So I had a question on the West Broad Street Small Area Plan, and I would draw your attention to the sentence, "The alternate concept map avoids the use of specific building heights and instead provides general ranges based on existing zoning allowances and the special exception process." So.
Mr. Chair, one of the reasons Mr. Stoddard's here is that we wanted to give you, and it can be done now, also as part of my report, an update on the progress and the timing on the update of the West Broad Street Plan.
Okay.
Perfect timing to.
So go ahead. Give us that update, because perhaps I am misreading this or misunderstanding this.
Sure. So I think, as the Planning Commission is aware, you all took an action in November recommending the West Broad Street Small Area Plan to council for their review and action. Since that time in November, staff and the council, the clerk, the Planning Commission have received a number of letters from property owners within the area, as well, the Economic Development Authority filed a new set of comments, and all of those letters surrounded some concerns about the conceptual heights identified in the concept map. And so staff, in reviewing those comments, as well as sort of the discussions with the Planning Commission, was trying to find a way to create sort of a recommendation for council that was consistent with everything that staff had heard.
So let me just interrupt you real quickly. So those are the three letters?
Let's see, there is the, gosh, it's those attached, yes.
We have copies here of three letters from the Christian Scientists, from McGuire Woods, which.
Dave Glass, how was that?
No, that's Greg, and then Bill Baskin.
That is correct.
Those, that's the.
And the EDA.
Well, but from property owners.
So those are the three that included in the memo. After this memo went to print, let's see, there was another property owner sent in regarding, what is the property across from the Flower Building? I can't remember the property address off the top of my head, but it's that southwest corner of.
803, is it 803?
Yeah, the office building. As well, we just received another letter today regarding the Lee Square Apartments and their interest in also potentially developing some of their frontage. So this has been sort of an ongoing process with property owners, starting to take note of what's in these small area plans, and starting to file letters with their concerns about some of the concepts.
They didn't do it when we were doing the hearings on it, though. They waited until after we had approved something and expected that to be sent on to the city council. They came in after that. Is that correct?
That is correct. So what's included in the staff package that was distributed to the council for the meeting that subsequently got snowed out, and is now rescheduled for February 8, planning staff is bringing forward the concept map with this modification that's shown here, that previously, when the nodes were demonstrated, that the land use plan for the concept has always been these nodes of development, the retail nodes, and the office hotel node. In the version that the Planning Commission last saw, the nodes were less bubble-like, and they were more square, drawing to specific parcel boundaries. That led to some frustration and concern with people, meaning, what does it mean that I'm in the node versus just outside of the node? And that was getting the dialogue away from the idea that this is a concept map. And so the bubble is intended to reinforce the idea that it's a concept. In the package that went up to council, the concept building heights were kept as the Planning Commission acted on in their November meeting, so I'm just going to step real quickly through these slides. These are the slides that were intended for council, and you'll see that all of the building heights were as proposed. Subsequent to the Planning Commission's action, as I mentioned, several letters came in from property owners, and planning staff was reflecting on some of the conversations we had, and the idea that this is a concept map, it's not supposed to be a zoning map, the city has a zoning process, it has a public review process for deciding heights. And so staff has put together this alternate recommendation that identifies the nodes as those bubble shapes, and then indicates that within the nodes, that's the right space for a sort of medium-high density, and then spaces in between that are supposed to be those infills would be more medium-density. And then that's defined on the map itself to declare that medium-density is where height should be consistent with by right allowances, whereas within the nodes, special exception for height would be more appropriate for consideration.
And are all those special exceptions for height mixed-use?
They can be. There is, depending on what justification is, people can request greater height with a single use. For example, the hotel use that went through the city. One point, the Holiday Inn Express idea. One point, they were proposing five stories, and then decided to scale it back to four stories to be within 55-foot height limit of that zone. So you can ask for additional height, but again, you have to have a, it's something that is discretionary on the part of the Planning Commission and councils to whether or not to recommend and approve that.
Can you get up to the 30-foot special exception height bonus if you don't do mixed-use?
You could, but it would, again, be at the discretion of the council and the commission. In other words, perhaps someone would create a nice open space and have a taller building in one area, or perhaps they have greater setbacks. So there'd have to be a reason to grant that that made sense as part of the plan review.
Well, it would be a special, yeah, it would be a special exception, so they don't have to put mixed-use in there.
No. Building height is something that could be granted as a special exception if it's above the height limit. Again, not something that the council or the commission have to recommend, you'd do it only if you felt it.
We've just never seen anything like that.
Well, the one I mentioned was.
Was the hotel.
That one. And then we had something similar. We had a special exception for height for the assisted living project, the Kensington. It went taller than the limit, and they had to get a special exception for that additional height. But that would be the most recent example that's actually being built.
Okay.
So we wanted to keep you all in the loop, and Paul, again, those dates for the commission and the public as to when we think it'll be going to the commission, I mean, to the council and coming back for a possible hearing.
Yeah, February 8 is the expected council meeting date. Now, that, the February 8 is a normal meeting date of the council, but this is not expected to be an action item. This is just sort of a quirk that we had scheduled a work session item during the meeting, because there was an open time on the agenda. So February 8 for a work session-like item with the council, and then staff is recommending that council take up the item for action later in February.
And we expect we'll hear from council direction or thoughts they have about the plan, and letters and other advice that gotten from the commission, from other commissions.
So we're going to have a special, I mean, we're going to have a work session on this with council on the 8th. It's not going to be on their agenda for approval.
It's a public hearing item, but it's going to be, we're not recommending any action be taken, it's to bring it forward for them to look at, comment, and then with a recommendation for a later hearing date.
And are we going to be included in that work session? Because we have a meeting that night.
It's not scheduled as a joint work session, no.
And your calendar has changed, you're not meeting on February 8, because I think Ms. Mester has to cover the council meeting.
That's what I thought. That was my next question. Well.
But see, on this one, it says continue until February 8. That's why I thought we had a meeting.
Yeah, we're, but that got changed. All right. Well, so you, well, all right, we could spend a lot of time on this. I would just editorialize and say, it looked to me, when I first read through this, that a couple of landowners were driving the process more on something that we spent however many months and hours on it, a year, and that made me a little bit uncomfortable. But maybe there's more to the story, and I'm not fully versed in it. I think we were suggesting in the springtime that avoiding the use of specific building heights was maybe not such a bad idea, so it was rich in irony to have read that. You can imagine our frustration.
Yes. I think the idea of sort of relying on some of that zoning terminology in terms of the special exception, it actually sort of came out of the discussions with the Planning Commission, that let's not replace the zoning process and the development review process with this small area planning process. That's not what this is intended to be, it's supposed to be a concept, and so staff's suggestion is that it brings it back to that level.
Fine. Okay. I have one other update. Mr. Snyder, can you, in literally 30 seconds, tell us what the P3 process is?
Well, the city is presently going through the PPEA process, and they are entertaining two proposals that came out of the request for proposal, and there is a group working on those. The council is going to be, along with school board, I think, going to be talking about that in closed session this evening. And so that's kind of where things are. We'll have more to report, I guess, once that meeting is finished this evening.
Okay, fine. So the explanation we have gotten, we, the Planning Commission, is that we do not have active participation in this process, because it's the P3 process, and for reasons unclear to me.
However, I will say that.
The P3 process, we can't be present.
There, it's because of the way these things are structured, it's kept confidential. However, any land use and zoning actions that have to be taken on this property, and they will be needed for whatever happens, will absolutely and necessarily involve the Planning Commission.
I appreciate that. You have said that on several occasions. That doesn't give me a lot of comfort. The reason that I thought it was a good idea, and I think that there are others here that share my opinion, is that the more this process looks like it was baked from the very beginning, the less likely it is to be successful. So.
The other piece, the other piece is, of course, the agreement for the boundary adjustment with Fairfax County in terms of what that, there are limits on that property in terms of what can be developed.
Sure.
So that only, it's for education purposes, and then only a certain portion may be considered for commercial development.
Right. So certainly, others are more politically astute than I, but it just seems to me that the more wired this thing seems, the more doomed it probably is. But there you go. Planning Director's report.
One of the items that is outstanding is, the commission's interest in having a March retreat. We have not fixed a date. My thought was that if you had preferences, that you could let Ms. G know, we could try to settle on one of those dates. It was suggested as a Saturday in March, so the thought was to have a group discussion about a year forward, where we've been in the past year.
Just to go back to the P3 discussion, I guess I'm not up to date. The last time we spoke about this, there was some sense that we would be included in that process. It hadn't been formally asked, but through, you know, just informal conversation, it seems like people were open to the idea. I'm now hearing that that is no longer the case?
Well, the formal P3 process has state and legal restrictions for confidentiality. At some point, if that goes forward, and property needs to be considered for planning and zoning, the Planning Commission and the city council will have to be involved in that, and the commission by state law will have to be involved. So there will be, there's a need for a planning designation, there's a need for confirmation that it's an appropriate school site, there's a need for rezoning the property to a zone that would allow schools and other uses. Presently, it's got a placeholder R1A zoning that's, because of the city code, new properties brought into the city, that's the zone that automatically is put on. Other than that, it's unplanned and unzoned. And so we need to do that regardless of the P3 process. That's when the commission and the council together will have to be involved in, with the public making those decisions.
So the only role of the Planning Commission is, as Mr. Meeks just indicated, is after the fact. I mean, we have to do some approval process, some rezoning, but we're not involved at all in the planning itself, and in how it looks, and how the deal is structured at all?
Yes.
There is, nothing can be built on a property without being planned and zoned, and so there will have to be involvement by the commission. It would require site plans, it would require special exceptions, so there would absolutely be involvement. At this point, the way it's done in Virginia has confidentiality requirements. We'll know more after this evening as to whether that's moving forward, and I'll keep you apprised as best I can. I've conveyed to the city manager of the commission's interest in continuing to have input, meaningful input into the process of how that area is developed.
Yeah, so we've talked about this numerous times, but always with the understanding that, hey, this looks like it'll probably happen, because why wouldn't it? So this has taken a different turn, I guess, and I'm just learning about it this evening. So the reason that we're not involved, sort of as a liaison at the very least, is because of a formal Virginia code issue?
I'd be happy to have the city attorney brief you on this and explain it better, but there are constraints about how these things are handled, and we have to operate under those, in terms of confidentiality.
Constraints as set by Virginia, not by members of the council, or?
Yes, I think it's state code and how these things operate. We have special counsel who are advising our city attorney on this as well, so.
It is regulated by state code, and it is dependent on the two legal entities that.
Just to interrupt, what is regulated?
The P3, the PPEA, Private Public Education Act, as well as if it was the Transportation Act. So this whole process is regulated by state code, and the legal entities that issued the RFPs, which would be city council and school board, are the only external bodies outside of staff that can be part of the process. Indeed, as you all recall, there was interest in dialogue in trying to have Planning Commission, EDA, and a broader community, and based, as Mr. Snyder indicated, after legal review, it was deemed, because of confidentiality in the state code, that that was not permissible.
Yeah, I'm surprised. We often have, or not often, we have, in the past, had confidential hearings, we, you know, are privy to issues that are not to the public on, in frequent occasions, but they have happened. And I don't really actually understand why we would be excluded as someone who, as a body that is intimately interested and will have a role in future deliberations on this topic. I'd definitely like to get more information, whether that's from the city attorney, or, you know, either at a meeting to explain it to us, or in writing, because it doesn't make much sense to me, both from a state code standpoint, but also from a common sense standpoint. To exclude us from the process, I think, is a mistake. I mean, for us to come in while we will have some role after the fact is, makes it very difficult to make any changes. That's true of any proposal that comes to us. If we're not involved in the process, using Mr. Meeks' terms, that if it's already baked by the time it comes to us, our ability to make any adjustments is very difficult and limited.
In terms of other updates, Mr. Chair, I did want to mention, we had a very excellent turnout for the WNOD meeting this past Saturday, full house and a lot of interest. There's going to be continuing work on that. Also, the Miller House project is moving forward. I've asked Ms. G to send you an update from staff. There'll be a work session. There'll be a work session with City Council on the 16th of February, public hearing on the 22nd of February, and then a 30-day public hearing. Public comment, period. That's the possible development of the vacant, the vacant house property on Washington Street for a possible group home. So I wanted to alert you that. I think Ms. Hockenberry's been following that for some time. So those are a couple of items that I want to make sure we keep up to date on. And we would like to, we would like to set that retreat meeting date in March, so if we can let Ms. G. know the best Saturday to do that, we could tally that for you and get back to you, if you'd let her know what's most...
Spring break is March 19th through effectively March 27th, which is Easter Sunday. So other than that sort of block of time, I think we just need to pick like the Saturday before and maybe a Monday when we're not normally meeting, or something like that, we're good. I mean, you're probably going to have to circulate...
We'll do that. But we'll avoid that time period.
Two dates. But I think if you miss, well, heck, we don't want to do anything on the 17th. That's St. Patrick's Day.
No, I was going to say that. Thank you for saying it for me.
We're having a special meeting on that.
Yeah.
It's the only time I've ever missed a meeting, I think.
Yeah. So, I mean, other than that. All right, fine.
We'll work on that. I'm going to be going downstairs to the work session, if that's okay?
That's okay.
And Ms. Mester is here on the CIP, so.
Could I go back to this PP3 thing, just briefly? I don't think we're asking, when Ms. Mester said, to expand it to other members of the community. I think that it's important to have representation from the Planning Commission and from EDA. And just this whole idea of after the fact is just not good enough. And we're not saying, okay, any other members of the community, but there's such important things that need to be considered and need to have input on. And I think it's setting up a situation where it's going to be very, very difficult to deal with proposed plans that might come through without that input. And so it really concerns me as the process. And so in asking the city attorney's judgment, I would like it considered just strictly for, you know, those two positions. It's just too darn important and too big a situation to have a concentrated two bodies dealing with it, and I don't think it looks good for the public, to the public either. So those are my concerns.
And I want to add that we're not actually asking for that the Planning Commission be part of the process. What we have, what we have previously discussed was having a liaison who was there. One member who could sit in on the process and sort of report back to us and give us some information, maybe if there's confidential information, then that would be different. But that we would have a single member as part of that process, or the person who could listen to the confidential information and have an understanding what the Planning Commission wants, I don't think is, again, I don't know the code, but it doesn't seem like that's an overreach by any stretch. And the fact that, in that way that situation is set up, the Planning Commission is just, is such an after the fact, they've already gotten implicit approval from the other two bodies. So when you start to say, like, look, we need to have changes done, in the current process, we have a, we have a, we matter in that process. But by the time you've already gotten council involved in this, and the school board, and they've all sort of signed off and said, this is what we want, and then it comes to us, and we say, if you don't make these changes, you're not going to have our support, that's an empty threat. It has no ability to change the outcome. It wouldn't change my opinion if I came forward with proposals, and I knew I had the support of 14 of the 21 people already. So for us not to have input during the process, I think is a real mistake for the Planning...
Major problems.
Yeah, for the community. Let's just leave it at that.
Well, they will, if you just think it through to its conclusion, they will have had to go out to the bond market with something that theoretically is not approved.
Yeah, my, I only have one question, which you probably don't have to answer, which is, at some point, it comes out of the secret squirrel process. I just don't, I'm curious at what state the plans are in when that occurs. That's what I wonder. Because if it's in the secret level, as they're competing between two developers, I just don't know how far along they get in the planning and the specifics before it comes out and becomes more public. So if we have someone come talk to us about it, that would be my question.
Well, if you recall, two years ago, I had put together some draft ideas about planning and zoning for the area.
And they were excellent.
We have, we have thought about that, and we continue to think about it.
But it's not just the, not just the zoning and everything, it's just the whole concept. And I would imagine that we would be willing to meet closed session, too. You know, I just, I think we've got the capability of doing that. And, but I just think it's, it's not a wise move.
Well, we appreciate your input. I've conveyed some of this previously to the manager. The Commission's keen interest in participating in the process. We'll know more after this evening's meeting, possibly. I'll try to keep you up to date. And also, see if we can get the city attorney to give you some briefings as well. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to Cindy Mester, and we're going to talk CIP.
I did. No, I just got word. I'm sorry, I wasn't clear in that. I got, I got the official no. Sorry. I skipped my introduction.
Not exactly that we're keen on it, you know. Come on.
Well, but the check is that they got to go sell bonds, right? They got to pass a referendum and sell bonds. And I just don't, I can't imagine, if I were an opponent... Okay, yes. Sorry. Item 6A, new business. Take it away.
Good evening, Chair Meeks and Planning Commission. I'm glad to be back with a more detailed and formal presentation than we talked about two weeks ago on the 19th. Before you, you should have a notebook with this five-year CIP planning process, your key resource guide for the next month. Also, the PowerPoint presentation, which attempts to sort of distill and be the Cliff Notes for the CIP. The presentation that we have tonight will be added to the website tomorrow.
And since we have seen this, for the most part, for four years, for the most, can you just go through the highlights of the, well, no, okay, you're an artist. Okay. I always think...
But I was anticipating that somewhat, so you will see that the bulk of the finance and the details that you've been seeing are towards the end, and I will highlight them for you, but I will not need to go through them in detail. But then this can be your resource guide.
Okay.
So there are some changes that I do want to highlight for you this evening. But some of the stuff is similar, like you've seen before. The CIP notebook is three-ring bind and tabbed. We do have a new project sheet format that we'll look at more closely as we go through different projects. But for example, if you flip to Tab 4 for the first project sheet, you'll see, it's all on one page, and we've added a photo or an image to ease, to kind of give a visualization to what the project is. Then, and it has less of timelines and schedules, so we could focus more on a project description. Also, for the staff's purposes, we have additional sheets now that allow us to really identify the funding sources, the sub-projects, the type of debt financing, and so it'll be a real workable tool. The funding sources are still color-coded, as you've seen in the past, and on the summary sheets, I will have highlighted if it's, when the school board adopted, or if I had to modify. Tab 1, starting on page 1-9, still has the updates for all the current projects. So if you want to check in for projects that you all have approved in the past, and you wonder where they are in the process, you can see that. In Tab 3, where we always spend a lot of time, we have added the project sheet map again, so you have a good visual reference there. And you'll see under Tab Aide for Transportation, some additional resources. So I've tried to put a lot of stuff in the notebook, so it's in one easy reference place for you. We will be, of course, focusing on executing the vision and being consistent with the comp plan. Now, what's always good is to talk about our successes from past CIP projects. So the next two slides are intended to get us excited, because things that you all have approved are now being implemented. And so here's some good ones. The Great Falls and Thackeray Stormwater projects, as we know, the tennis courts that were associated with both of those projects. Very important police dispatch, and our CAD system is now up to current technology. We've done some good street reconstruction. What's not always very visible to the public, but very important, is the property yard stairs were literally falling off the building and would capture ice and snow. They are now properly secured, undercover, and very well timed for this recent snowstorm. And of course, West End Park, and that's a photo of the ribbon cutting. We have also a lot of projects in process. And South Washington Transit Plaza, Streetscape, and Undergrounding is progressing. And with transportation next week, we can talk any more detail, that there's questions. But we've got pedestrian, we've got stormwater projects, sewer, traffic signals, a lot of good implementation happening. One of the new things that I mentioned on the 19th, when I was with the Planning Commission, we have tried to do a new CIP cycle, to do sort of a biennial process, odd year. Will just be updates to existing projects that have been planned for the five-year period, and adding the new fifth year, since it's a rolling five-year cycle. And then even number of years will be the more significant changes in projects that allow us to focus and keep implementing the projects, as noted on the previous two slides. That said, with FY17 sort of being our transition year and first time to try this, there are two new projects in this cycle. And they are noted on this slide, as well as some key things that will be the focus of this deliberation of the CIP process. The two new projects are the Downtown West Broad Street Plaza, that was mentioned during Commissioner comments earlier. And we will have a fuller discussion during work session on that, as Mr. Stoddard indicated. The other new project is a $4 million debt finance project for schools, intended to have a resource available for school land acquisition. As we go through the CIP, we'll be talking a lot about transportation grants that are pending, which is a great resource. Applications are in, but they do need to be matched, so we can take advantage of them. We'll be talking in more detail about the shared parking agreement, which is a follow-up to the public parking on Park Avenue that was in the CIP last year, and council requested some alternative options and resources being done. So we'll talk about that. There is no pay-go money in the CIP after this FY17, the next fiscal year that we're planning for, except for the land sale that's set aside for Big Chimneys/Transportation Project in '17. So after that, there's no new resources. And there is no dedicated funding yet for transportation. And I know that's one, Chair Meeks, that we've been talking about for several years. And so I've highlighted it a little bit more further, because we're having trouble now figuring out creative ways to access that money, and we're about to the point, we won't be able to draw down that 30% MBTA regional transportation money. In order to get our full draw, ideally, that would be two cents on the tax rate. And just as a reminder, for every $1 local money, we can leverage four to five times in grants. The goals for the CIP remain the same, in terms of reinvesting in our community, and prioritizing over a five-year period, and really trying to maintain financial strength and balance workload. This map shows where all the projects in the CIP would happen. You can see a heavy focus on parks and the commercial corridor. And then the pink up here would be the W&amp;O D. for the other transportation focus. A lot of times, our work session and discussions are focused mostly on general fund and transportation, but as a highlight, we do have two utilities in the CIP. Nothing dramatically different from what the Planning Commission's seen as in the past year. I will note, for the sewer utility, there's going to be a 3% increase based on the five-year planning study we had in order to hit the necessary facility improvements. And you can see the dollar amounts targeted in the five-year CIP. For stormwater, there is money that's being spent with the current year and prior, in the 3.75 set aside for the next five years. We've targeted that, but it will require a fee increase in order to handle the debt service for that, so that will be an operating budget discussion. The proposed CIP hasn't, doesn't have a changed rate, because that's a council action. Right now, it averages about $250 per year per customer. And this chart will just give you the summary in a dollar amount for FY17 and the five-year period. Moving on to general and transportation funds, this gives you a synopsis of the first year of the CIP and the five-year for information, public safety, facilities, transportation, and recs in park. And when you're looking at Tab 3, just a couple highlights besides the map that you have, you have the traditional general fund, school fund summary, followed by transportation, color-coded. Once again, the five-year projection form, which would be page 3-3. And on that one, in the dead center, you'll see a broad gold-orange color. And it shows that in order to main compliant with the 17% fund balance ratio, we would need $350,000 a year added to the budget in the CIP to maintain policy. But that also is one penny that would leverage the transportation. We did include, again, based on the request two years ago, the fund summary. So the legal pullout will show you, instead of by projects, by fund. And so you can see, for example, what's grant-funded or what needs funding, because the green is still the only if. And also, the last page in that tab is a request from the Planning Commission to kind of summarize all those charts in one, so you can see general fund, transportation, and utilities, all on one page. And that is the last page of Tab 3, 3-7. Moving into facilities, you have a map for all the general government and school facilities, as you had last year. For general government facilities, these are visualizations to remind us of all the facilities that the general government maintains, and the transition of City Hall. As we move into facilities discussions, these are a couple key ones, and we'll talk in more detail in the work session. As I mentioned, there's no more pay-go after FY17, which means for our facility reinvestment, general government, the same will be on the schools. When I get to schools, there's no money. The firing range is the same project as you saw last year. Fire Station 6 is similar, but Mr. Collins has been working with Arlington to really refine what the projects are, how they're cost estimating, and trying to get it into a, get the projects done, but at a manageable price level. The library expansion project is, as you saw it last year, two options, east or west, the dollar amount is the same, same requirements and options. The one thing that the library board has done since the last CIP process, they conducted a patron study, survey, to see how people were arriving to the library. And this was one of the points for additional follow-up on the need for parking. And the synopsis is here, but 70% of the patrons drove, 58% of the patrons parked on neighboring streets near the library. And then we also inquired, if there was more public parking nearby, how far away from the library would you be willing to walk? And you can see the percentages for one block, two, and then three. Three dropped, but a fair amount of people, 35%, would walk one block. A lot of the patrons want to park once and visit many places, and so I think as we look at parking, that's the importance of public parking, and so that you don't have to worry about if you're crossing property lines, or some form of public-private partnership. Additionally, we did some more review on the public... Additionally, we did some more review on the public parking, and this is the one that the Planning Commission saw last year, that would be a one-story structure at 313 Park Avenue. And in addition to the patron study, we did a shared parking analysis to look at what were the parking options and availability of all the private parking around the library and City Hall, as well as street parking. And you will find in, Tab 6, following the public parking project sheet, which is 6-3, you will find the entire report from this parking study. This is just a synopsis, but all 35 pages is there, so the Planning Commission could see in full detail. As part of that study, done by Four Square, which is the third study they've done for the city, they did the full citywide TDM, then they did a parking study specifically for City Hall, Community Center Campus, and then we had them broaden it to look at library and the street and the private parking lots around us. So they had continuity of knowledge. They identified that with the 6,000 square feet of additional space at the library and by R codes and normal library patron parking codes in similar localities, 10 additional spaces would be needed. That's if the option for the library expansion kept the seven that are behind the library, otherwise it would be 17. During the transition to build the parking garage behind the City Hall, we'd need 20 spaces to offset the lost parking for where the police are parking now. And also, as part of that study, they did parking counts on a Tuesday morning, well, Tuesday all day. Tuesday, that was a court day, and Tuesday, that was also concurrently storytime at the library, which is one of the biggest library draws. So we picked the most-used time for the two facilities. Then they did Saturday, so that we could pick up Farmer's Market, as well as library activities. They found during that study that at the peak usage, the lots on average were only 65% utilized, and there were 184 spots around us, and significantly more than 30 within 800 feet. They're just not marked, they're not authorized in an agreement for public parking, and you would risk towing if there wasn't something else in place. So they did research shared parking agreements. They have recommended several that we could look at. One in particular, they think is most beneficial for us to consider, and it would be a more cost-effective solution to try to better manage and utilize those 80, 184 spaces. So what this CIP is recommending is that the parking structure at 313 remain in the CIP, but be moved to the fifth year, and is still being funded, as proposed here, with water sale proceeds. But then, in the meantime, we immediately proceed with implementing a shared parking agreement with about three of the properties closest to us that had the highest vacancy, lowest utilization, and negotiate with them a shared parking agreement, and then build the City Hall public safety parking garage, and then reassess. So the consultants identified about 30 spaces that we would need with library expansion and City Hall construction. The proposed parking garage, as you recall, would have netted 55 additional spots. It'd have a total of 109, 110, because we'd rebuild the current surface parking, but the net new was 55. So as we go through our library and transportation discussions, this can be a further follow-up with the Planning Commission. This is just two charts out of that report that kind of give you a visualization of what's available. On Saturday, the blue was occupied, so this orange was available parking. And it's lower at the peak of the Farmer's Market, but there's still significant parking.
Can you give us a sense of where it is?
Where the spots are?
Yeah.
Sure. And I don't want to do it off. 313 Park Avenue is one, for sure, 200 Little Falls, and I think it was 312 Park Avenue were the top three. Let me see if I can find the page quick enough.
Page 16, I think, of the. Oh, it's in here. Okay, fine. Never mind. We're okay. I can read it.
Yeah, you'll have a lot more detail on available parking by address in the report.
Okay, fine.
Touching base on school facilities, they had requested facility monetization. This is the adopted school board for $400,000. As was last year, there's only 680,000 capital reserves for facilities, and it was split evenly last year in this CIP. Before you, it was evenly splitting FY17, so each have 321,000, general government and schools. The high school and Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School are proposed, as they were last year. In the color coding system, they're still pink, because they need a financing plan. And to your discussion earlier, that's still contingent upon the P3, the PPA process that's unfolding, as to what that cost would be and what economic development opportunities could offset the cost. And as Mr. Snyder indicated, and I will join him, we'll follow up with the City Council and the City Manager on your requests and comments. These next two slides actually speak to sort of where the process has been and what's been happening. This is from the December 2015 Town Hall meeting that the City Manager and Superintendent did. So there is the website link there. And this is the current schedule based on the review of the Phase 1 RFPs that have been received. That's what's being deliberated right now of the two. Do they meet the general goals that were outlined in the RFP, which is on the website and public? And if so, is there one that's worth proceeding or not, balancing financial and school need costs? As I go to the issue of the RFP, then there'd be a more detailed concept to work with. And then that's the rest of the timeline at the macro level. Moving into transportation, you'll see in Tab 8, a full version of this, which will be easier to read. But this is a transportation cycle graphic that we created this year to help put in context for, not necessarily you all, because you've been seeing how we've been evolving this, but for the council and the community to fully understand how transportation projects work from the comp plan, the small area plans, as the one you were talking about earlier, and then the master plans, the bicycle, the bus stop, and the W and O D as examples. Once we've done the planning, then we select the priorities and do scoping, pursue grant applications. And you also have in your notebook a list of all the grant application opportunities and what we've gone for. And then, of course, that forms the CIP that then becomes the recommended document that you're looking at this evening. As we get the allocation of funding, then we go into engineering, construction, going into the ribbon cutting, the best part, pictures in front of West End Park, for example. And then we start the process over again. It's an iterative process, selecting the next projects and having it consistent with our planning documents. It's taken about three years to get a real good transportation process going, where we just weren't going for grants, and then figuring out how to manage it and staff it, and how did it consist with the planning. So we're really excited to be at this point, and so we wanted to kind of give you a graphic visualization of that. There are many projects underway we've talked about. We have done a lot to realign staff resources to work that transportation cycle. Couple of the challenges, neighborhood traffic calming remains recommended by the CACT. It's showing us 200,000 in each year of the CIP, but it is not funded. It is green. And there are a lot of grant opportunities that fit the residential neighborhood traffic calming situation. So that remains an unmet need. The W and O D is in, also is not funded, but I do note that we have a $2 million grant that's been filed, and we are optimistic about that, but it will need approval in order to fund that, and it will require a 20% match. And then we have additional grants, almost a little over $4 million of grants that have been applied for. And with maximizing other grants and leveraging things already approved, we'd actually only need another $100,000 to leverage that 4.3. So that's a visualization on how $1 can trigger a lot of money and why I think it'll be an important discussion for the Planning Commission and subsequently council if we're going to have dedicated funding for this match drawdown. A lot of other grants out there for signals, working to implement downtown POA, Park Avenue, Great Street. We have a bike share grant in, W and O D, and bridges. Lot of good stuff that you'll see in the transportation section and summarized on the one transportation fund sheet with a lot of green. These pie charts are also in your notebook, and it was just to give you some visualization of how we've allocated staff. As you know, in the city, a lot of staff aren't just doing 100% CIP. They're also doing regional coordination, planning, citizens' response, implementing the projects, et cetera. So you'll see, planning staff, for example, 15% goes to CIP. Engineering staff, 33. Inspections, 27. And so what's good about this strategy of maximizing resources, we get a lot of FTEs put towards CIP projects at the right stage. So we can do the planning, we can do the design, and then we have the expertise to implement them. In terms of recreation and parks, the Rexon Parks Advisory Board adopted proposal is in your notebooks. I will note that it is revised for FY17. There was no funding to fund the FY17 $200,000 request for master planning, but half of it could be debt financed, and that would be for the Cherry Hill Park Playground and providing for accessibility equipment. And so that's in FY17. The part that had no funding and could not be debt financed is showing in FY18 in your notebook. FY17 and '20 are proposed to be funded in the CIP, because they are bondable, so we can debt finance them. '18 and '19, they're in the infamous green, only if we could figure out a way to fund them. The other projects for Howard E. Herman, it's still there as it was last year. The nice thing was, is that $100,000 of that money, which is the debt finance piece, is what's funding the Cherry Hill playground equipment. So Rexon Park and the staff were able to shift between the two projects because of the partnership with DPW and the federal grant that did a lot of the daylighting work. Downtown Public Plaza is, as I mentioned earlier, the new project in the park section. Now, this is the part that you've seen for multiple years, and so it's here as a resource. I'll highlight just what's there, but I'm not going to delve into the details. So you'll get the charts that break out how the CIP is by program on one-year window and a five-year window, the blue being the big school demand. Then you'll have the charts that summarize by funding types instead of project type for transportation, general fund. I highlighted the to-be-determined, the only-if green, because that is a significant part of the CIP. It identifies the needs that staff, boards, and commissions have identified for reinvesting in our community, but they are not funded. Over a five-year period, that reflects 15 million, and FY17 is 6.2. Fortunately, a lot of that can be transportation grants, but what that leaves unfunded is things like IT mobility access, which is our ability to have our staff working with tablets and smartphones and GIS out in the field, instead of having to come back and do data. They can look up the photos, they can look up code, they can look up the permit live out in the field. It is also what would allow us to have good public Wi-Fi at the library and the community center. Facilities, I've mentioned, and also transportation, or traffic calming. This is the summary of the debt service policy that is in Tab 2 in its full narrative. This is your Cliff Note version. This is the chart that shows where we are with the proposed CIP. The red is the new debt, so you can see we're not at the 12% threshold. I will highlight here, this does not include the pink. So the school financing is not here. I didn't do the scenario again, because I've done it three years for you, and it says the same thing every year. We can't afford $100,000, it goes over policy, and so I didn't repeat it this year. But we did show you another visualization of what our debt looks like over 2040 and where the policy is. So you can see, there's not a lot of room when you're looking at a $105 million debt. Here's the debt that's already out there between schools and general government, by school facility, by general government facility. Cliff Notes on the fund balance policy, where we need to target is 17% of general fund. Once again, I highlight at the bottom that there's no additional pay-go, there's no money being put into the capital reserves for long-term capital reinvestment. Here's a visual glance of where we are at FY16 proposed, right at policy limit, and the CIP maintains that. These two lines overlap, because pretty much the policy and the projections for fund balance are at 17%, because we're purposely putting, if we had money, it would go into CIP. There's the numerical percentage breakout for your fund balance at the top row, and then debt servicing. See, we're not getting to the 12%, but we're right at the 17%. The next sections ensure one of your important charters, ensure consistency with comp plan and our planning documents, the CIP before you does that. There continue to be project management challenges and opportunities. You did see these last year. And some of that continues to be staying within policy and providing that grant match and funding the capital reserves. We'll continue the community engagement as we started last year. I will note with the snow, I did not get the survey out last week as intended, so my goal is either tomorrow or Wednesday, the online survey will be out, so that you all will have the responses in time for this February 16th work session, definitely before you take action on the 22nd. I will also note that with scheduling in February, we couldn't get a date for the Sunday open house Town Hall that we tried last year with the CIP. It was successful, so what we are going to do, since we couldn't figure out a time in February that will work, we're going to merge it with the council's planned Saturday Town Hall in March. Last year was just operating, and I think we'll combine it and be operating the CIP, and it'll get a lot of draw, because a lot of people care about that reinvestment. It is during the week that Mr. Meeks noted as spring break, but it was the only time that on the council's schedule we could get it. There will be a second one for any of those that are out of town for school break, but this will be the Town Hall, one for CIP. And that open displayed bore, open house model, not just the straight presentation and ask questions from the audience. We will take questions though via the website. This is the email address, and any that come into that address that are CIP-related will be directed to me and will respond in post. This is the schedule for the CIP before the Planning Commission. Work session tonight, following this meeting, another public hearing, and work session on the 16th. You can see what subjects we'll focus on, and then follow up on any questions on the 16th, currently scheduled to adopt on the 22nd. That's just a repeat of the key focus from the very early slides, so it can be fresh in your mind as we go to Q and A. That's my formal presentation, Chair Meeks.
So our schedule and our agenda is correct, except February 8?
Correct.
Okay.
So you will only have two work sessions on the CIP, so I have endeavored to pick key projects, not 100%. And then, of course, we'll talk about any that the commission wishes.
Okay, fine. So tonight's work session, didn't we do financial planning and policy review?
Yeah. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them, or if you want additional follow-up during the work session, I can make a note of that. It'll really be focused on facility, Fire Station 6, parks, and hopefully schools, but the superintendent is currently down with council, and if they're not done in time, I'll take any questions and data that you need, and we can highlight what's in your notebook, and we'll follow up with her.
Well, so would you like for us to adjourn and go into work session, or would you like for us to just keep doing what we're doing?
Whatever would work better for you in the minutes. If you want to stay up there, I'm ready to go, and as you can see, we have staff resources here. Or if you wish to move down to the table, we can draw some mics out. I believe they're still going to be recording the work session and so we'd want to capture that with microphones.
You know, I really, I worry about our ratings, quite frankly, with the
Yeah.
What else works? Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
May I have a question before we make this grave decision?
Yes, of course.
Ms. Mester.
The online survey is going to be completed and out to the public next week.
I'm actually hoping it'll be out tomorrow or Wednesday.
Tomorrow or Wednesday and you're going to give two weeks to gather.
Yeah.
How will the data collected from the survey be used if the CIP seems pretty, as our chairman calls it, already baked?
Part of the questions that I'm doing is slightly different than last year. We will ask people to prioritize, just in general, what's important, so that if you all heard X was more important, you might want to say, okay, we're not going to use the money on facilities, we want to put it elsewhere. So that can be options. Part of the questions I'm also planning to ask are things like, would you support two cents for dedicated funding? Try to get some concrete stuff. Do you support the new projects in the CIP that weren't there last year? Try to get some sort of concrete, specific questions to give you info that still will be anecdotal important information, just one source of your decision-making.
So you're kind of looking more for agreement to what we're doing than changes?
Yeah, kind of reacting to this. Last year, the survey went out before we presented the CIP and just with the timing of everything, that didn't happen. So now I'm more focused on the questions that are here to get reactions to it.
And we've always gone a little bit off-script. I mean, we've gotten overruled.
Right, always.
Which is okay.
You have modified and you've had several motions per.
Oh, I was just wondering how the survey was going to be presented to the public. You know, would they be more apt to take the survey that they thought was going to make a difference as far as what we were doing, or would they say, it's already done, we may as well just, you know, say, yeah, we like it or we don't like it?
Yeah, it's more structured. This is what's proposed and then of these things, what's more important to you, would you support X or Y?
Well, I guess we'll see as to how many people respond and we'll be able to contrast it from last year.
Exactly.
And I have one other quick question before we get into the work session. Do you by any chance have a copy of our last year's, this chart with you?
I can get it online, I don't have a hard copy.
Well, maybe I can ask that question at the work session. I don't want to hold. I just wanted to see, I meant to bring mine and I forgot. I was wondering where the library renovation is with regard to our last approved CIP and where it is now. Are they exactly the same or has it changed?
Yes, that's in the same fiscal year and same dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just?
Yes, of course.
I would hope, to follow up on Ruth's question, I would hope that last year's survey was also considered in the making up of this CIP also. Because I would imagine the results would be somewhat similar, but I hope, I think it's important to note that we had that when, last year, and it's still in process because I would say it's, would probably be quite similar.
I think yes, in terms of the priorities and the type of projects that were important and probably were consistent with the sort of when to do it sooner versus later. And except for the two new projects and some additional grant funding, this is not significantly different. The parking garage delay for FY '21 would be another change.
So here's what let's do, I think. Let's get a motion to adjourn and we'll go right into the work session and we'll just hit facility reinvestment right off the top unless anyone has any questions or anything that won't
Are we staying up here?
That won't be covered. I think we should just stay up here for simplicity's sake, if that's okay.
For ratings.
For ratings. We have, just, I worry about that all the time.
I don't want my best side.
Okay, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second. Motion to adjourn moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, outstanding. We are in the work session. Are we going in this order, facility reinvestment, or do you want to?
Let me just, Danny, do you have any board members here? Let's do facilities. So this would be in Tab 6. Tab 6, here we go. And we get to the page number. 6-2, or 3-1 if you prefer the summary sheet. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Collins just to give a brief description of what's in there and the challenges with lacking funding after this fiscal year.
Where's the summary, 6-?
2.
6-2 has the project description and 3-1 is the color-coded summary of all projects.
Got it. Would you like the summary or would you prefer to read there for yourselves?
You know, you're an artist and every time I try to get someone to just give us the summary, it always backfires on me, so just whatever you were planning to do, go ahead and do it.
Well, I think, I think you can read there what it's about. It's reinvesting in and refurbishing our facilities, replacing critical systems, equipment and so on. We have 11 facilities, 11 major facilities, 11 ancillary buildings. The newest, which is 30 years old now, I believe, that would be the community center's renovation. So our facilities are aging, require a lot of investment in them. The key challenges, as Cindy mentioned, is that we have no dedicated out-year funding. And obviously, I think most of you all or all of you would understand that without continued investment, you are on a sinking ship and will have to pay more later.
Can we go to 3?
What's that? Great.
You, I think you want to go to 3-1.
3-1? 3-1 is the summary sheet that I just put up.
What's the difference between 3-1 and 2-2?
Do you mean 6-2, Ms. Rogers?
No, 2-2, 2-2 and 2-3 and 3-1. They're both charts, they look exactly the same to me, except they're not.
They are identical in the Section 2 because that's the financial focus on policies. We put them there just so you didn't have to cross to the next tab, but they are identical to what's in 3.
Okay, so I can stay with my 2-2 because that's where I made my notes?
Yes.
Okay.
There is additional financial information in Tab 3 that won't be in Tab 2, but... So on the screen, line 18 would be the facility reinvestment.
So why is the, why is it in yellow in 2017?
We have fund balance, the final bit of capital reserve, and so we're using that. So yellow is PEGO and we'll actually fund projects in '17. That's similar to the school modernization that's also in yellow. That's the 50-50 split of what's left.
Right.
And as a reminder, the school board asked for $400,000 and Mr. Collins asked for 350 for this year. Both got reduced.
Is, is there anywhere in here where we have a update of where we are as far as spending and where we're going with this building?
Yes, under Tab 1. Sorry for the feedback. And that will be on page... I think it's towards the end, starting on page 1-19, I believe. Yep, 1-19, you'll see an update on the facility renovations, Phase 1 and 2, what's completed and then what's rolling into the new project. And then you'll see it broken out all the way into 1-21. As a quick synopsis, the city has awarded contracts to two architectural engineering firms that will do our large complex projects like Library, City Hall, that kind of venue. And we are currently interviewing both of those two firms to decide which of the two the task order will be awarded to, to do the 100% designs out to construction bids. We want to make sure we have the best one match for this project in particular, what their vision, their creativity, how they're going to make it work within the budget. Both of the firms have said that they can do the design work and have it done, so construction can start at 2017 with a two-year construction estimate for 2019. So that's our starting tight timeline. And we plan to bring this back to Council for task order award in March. And we have a new date for the task force to meet in
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Just came out and I'm, do you remember the day?
I don't.
James just rescheduled it. But the task force members received a meeting invite from James Mack, the project manager. So once we have, at a staff level, interviewed and determined our top firm that we would recommend, then we'll convene the task force to review and give advisory input.
And when did this first go into the CIP?
It's 2007.
Oh, my God.
That was the first feasibility study.
Oh, my God, you know, just 10 years and working and still...
This and the radios and the firehouse.
An ongoing firehouse.
To see it go on and on.
And you'll see in Tab 1, I'm pleased to say the radios have actually been delivered and we're programming.
And they're probably obsolete by now.
Now, the Fire Station, that might be a nice segue for Mr. Collins' other project, which is up under Public Safety, but we do have Fire Station 6 and that will be in Tab 5, I believe. Yes, Tab 5.
Just before we move on to that, the city facilities reinvestment in 2018 through '21 is all in green, which is only if we get a revenue offset, grant funded.
Correct, so we need a grant or we need local funding going into the capital reserve so we can allocate it.
So as it stands right now, we have no planned, no plan for reinvesting in city facilities beyond this year?
Right, other than the City Hall, Public Safety, separate project that's been funded, but none of the other 20 facilities.
So that seems short-sighted to me.
Oh, and I should say the library, there's a project for that.
And I agree with you.
I mean, we're dealing with this year at 321,000, but to not have a plan to pay for facilities that are 30-plus years, that just doesn't, you know, we'll get into more of the details, but to have such a category of this nature that is sort of up in the air, this is not, this is something that's required to maintain our facilities. I understand that kind of green coloring or that, that grant slash revenue offset for projects that are yet to be built, that makes some sense to me. Hey, it'd be nice if we, if we get it, we get it. But for just maintaining, maintenance, to not know how we're going to pay for that, that seems like an odd place not to have a plan.
I would say Steph concurs with you, which is why the need is identified here, but without a tax increase, there was no funding because the capital reserve is at zero. And since the Planning Commission gets to opine both on comprehensive plan compliance and by charter, financial, wherewithal and sustainability, it is an issue we brought forward to you because we would agree, the reason we have so many large facility projects all at once is because we haven't been reinvesting. In the facility master plan, which is a separate document looking out 20 years, I worked with the CFO and looking at the depreciated assessed value of our buildings and what would a industry standard percentage should be being set aside so that we had ongoing money? It would be about $370,000 a year. The dollar amount that's in this CIP in the green, the 255,000, was actually Mr. Collins and Mr. Goff looking at each facility and trying to prioritize the critical things on a timed basis. In the ideal, it would not be quite this
Well, I mean
...emic of a diet.
That's great that he could prioritize them for 255,000, but
Funny.
There's no money to pay for even that prioritization.
A penny on the tax rate is about 350,000, just to give you a perspective of, and there's, unfortunately, there's just not grants out there to do facility reinvestment. It's, you know, not, transportation, one can go after some park stuff, but basic building maintenance, I haven't found one.
Is there any, are you finished?
Go for it.
Is there any information pinpointing the status of our different buildings considered in this facilities updating?
Well, there, there's a summary in here of pro, of progress on or recently completed projects using the facilities reinvestment. There's not, per se, a facility assessment of each facility in this report.
Wouldn't that be a good piece of information?
You do have your
We, there's a, when, when did that one date from?
That was the one you did as part of the fall CIP, I think? If I can find it quick enough. Public Works did a detailed analysis and we didn't put it in
That's, yeah, so
Just sort of by facility.
The outline of projects, yeah.
That they would do based on their assessment of needs. That reached the 250.
And when was that done?
This exercise was completed just in the last, just prior to the calendar year, so two months ago.
Yeah, the document is dated 12/9/2015, so very current. So you can see things at the lighting, replacement of ramps, basement, structural support, the core infrastructure maintenance, flooring, elevator overhaul.
The whole situation, it goes with the schools too, if you don't do, or with your own home, if you don't do the maintenance in an ongoing fashion and a planned fashion, you're going to end up paying a lot more later and having a lot more difficulty with your facilities. And I think that's been a difficult situation, well, let's say not only here, but it's within our whole nation with, with our infrastructure. And it is really worrisome, you know, not to have a plan that would cover some more ongoing, you know, it just seems like, okay, we got it to this point and we're just going to kind of eh. And I think that the, you know, with the schools, with the staff there, they've been able to, you know, patch things together and put duct tape on, you know, you know what I mean. And the same with us, same with, on the city side. And it's going to come back and bite us. And as it has, you know, with the ongoing situation with this building and the length of time it needs to do any updating and it's just worrisome that, you know, it's reactive rather than being proactive.
Well
Or I'm, am I viewing it?
No, no, I, I think you're correct if you're looking at the out-years as not having any funding.
Right.
The whole point of this program, of course, is to be proactive. And at the $300,000 level, we feel that we're probably being adequately proactive. Obviously, at a zero-funding level, that would
And that's in here, the 321?
Well, this year, yes, for FY '17, Ms. Mester.
Oh, way up here, okay, gotcha.
Ms. Mester pointed out, yep.
He's, what he's suggesting here is if you funded a 250
No, he's... What he's suggesting here is if you funded at two fifty-five, then you'd be somewhat proactive.
Right, but that's not being funded.
It's not being funded.
That's not being funded.
So if this is a zero, then proactive is no longer the right word.
I think that's...
Foolhardy is more the right word.
Seems to be the theme word of tonight, shortsightedness.
So that would be something as we go through this, welcome the planning commission's direction and suggestions. Obviously, there's not a lot of pay go unless we eliminate another project. These are not items that can be debt financed, we did look at that, but they're not the large items that are going to have a ten-year, one hundred and fifty capitalization.
And they can't be grouped. I know in the past we've done some of that, grouping enough of the same type of things so that it could be debt financed.
These particular ones, and it's the same thing with the parks master planning, is you can group it to the dollar amount, but the items are not ten-year useful life for bonding for gas bill accounting. So you can get one hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of signs or window HVAC units or some plumbing, but they're not the things that you can debt finance.
I think you might be able to massage some of them that way, but it would really handcuff your ability to actually proactively maintain the building. You'd then be playing games with funding and doing projects based on which packets you could put together.
It's also not cost effective. It's like if, you know, when you buy a new house, the refrigerator comes with it, but when you have to replace that refrigerator in twenty years, you don't go, in the ideal, have it as part of a twenty-year mortgage type situation.
Take that home equity, love.
Yep.
Or bundle it with the roof.
Bundle it with the roof. So, you know, it will be... It is a challenge that we wanted to bring to your attention this evening and then over the next three, you know, planning commission meetings on this, we need to get your input if there's anything you want to change or if you want to propose tax funding. And of course, by, I mean, there's no way else to say it, it's a tax increase if you want to get one penny for three hundred and fifty thousand.
But it's our charge to look at this type of thing and to recommend differences if we feel like they have to be made.
And this year, there's no formal council budget guidance. We do know they remain committed to CIP, but there's no formal adopted guidance in terms of tax rate other than, you know, general discussion of trying to maintain affordability for the tax citizens. So there's nothing that you're responding to in terms of a formal council action.
Can you explain to me, just refresh my memory, why we are now at a zero capital reserves after this year? Like, how did that situation occur?
There has never been dedicated funding for the capital reserve. So when there was a time period where the assessment and the tax rate weren't aligned on the same year, we would often end the year with surplus. And some of that surplus by policy would go into capital reserve. Or when we had land sale, we had some capital reserve, or when we've used water sales. Other than the little bit of water sale that's left for the possible parking garage in five point eight, which has been intended to be for long-term big projects and school facilities, there's no capital reserve left because we've been using it each year and it's never been replenished. So we're just out.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, just to follow up on that, I mean, as a city, I would think that we would have a policy of replenishing this reserve as we use it. Has there been any time in which we've come up with like a policy to do that? And what happened to it?
Tab two has a full adopted policy from two thousand and eleven. Slide forty-six that I just brought back up has the formal policy where we're supposed to add five hundred thousand every year and we should have three point seven five million in there by two thousand and twenty-one. And then after we reach that goal, then it's three hundred and seventy-five thousand every year that should be put in. It's about five percent of the fixed assets. Now, this capital reserve would not be for facilities only. It could be for other infrastructure, large equipment, vehicles, IT equipment, but the large bulk of it would be for facilities.
So I'm confused by one thing as I'm reading through here. We... I think we have approved the expansion.
Correct.
And that doesn't do anything to alleviate these... As I'm reading the description about the utility bills and all that stuff, there isn't some offset in that?
There would be some offset. It is... City Hall is one of twenty-two facilities and now it's the largest. So it is a, you know, significant chunk of that, but there would still remain twenty-one other facilities. And once we do the library, twenty other facilities that we're maintaining, having to pay the utilities and so on. So, yes, that will be a positive, but, you know, is it a four percent reduction or a eight percent reduction? We could do the math and try to guesstimate that, but it would be in that range.
Well, how would it impact the green two hundred and fifty thousand?
The green...
If at all?
It would... Two hundred and fifty thousand is actually a little bit of a haircut from where we think the number should be, just based upon fiscal realities.
Well, but so... But as I understood... I didn't ask this question well. So as I understand, the reason that... Part of the reason that we're trying to get the building to be silver lead is to get these numbers to be lower.
Yes.
Well...
But it won't...
Lead, yeah, lead, and as you're talking about energy.
Well, okay, so, okay, then let me...
More of an operating issue.
This is so clear in my mind. So the... So in other words, we're going to spend the money to upgrade the facilities, but we still need to spend the additional two hundred and fifty?
Again, again, I think it's a matter of scale. This is one of twenty-two buildings. So were we able to upgrade all of our buildings, you would see that number drop significantly down. You know, you would still need to invest in the facilities, you still need to continually invest in them, but by upgrading one facility out of twenty-two, albeit the largest one, you are not having a significant impact on that number. And that number at two fifty-five is already a reduction from the three hundred to three fifty level that we had been funding reinvestment at previously.
Well, we can move on. The specific reason I was very interested in the question is because I think one reason why we were interested in approving this, and I, by the way, sort of recalled that this was in eighteen, not nineteen, but I could have been just misremembering that. But one reason we were trying to do it is to pull down some of these deferred maintenance costs.
Yes.
So if we aren't pulling down the deferred maintenance costs...
Well, well...
Or could we accelerate the expenditure of the seven million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand to do something about this?
So, so actually, perhaps I didn't answer it well and I could have gotten a more direct answer. I can pick out, as I look at our project plan out of facilities reinvestment, I can pick out a number of projects that would be eliminated where we, had we upgraded this facility already. We have to replace five HVAC units a year roughly. We have remediation costs that we're going to have to invest in. So there are two immediate projects that were this facility done already would not be there. However, that's two out of several dozen projects that we have.
So if you look at this list, it's...
Sure, but what we're specifically trying to look at is perhaps there's some wisdom in accelerating the city hall work.
I think...
We had originally, gosh, in two thousand and eleven, this was sixteen or seventeen that we were shooting for?
I don't...
So it's been pushed to nineteen.
It's been pushed to nineteen because of deliberate discussions for additional need and alternatives. Now that the money's fully funded and we have the contract award, I can tell you, we're going with all staff deliberative process, but it's still going to take time to do the final engineering and design. And we do need some community engagement as to how does the front look, the traffic flows, some of that.
There's... At this point, there's nothing more you guys can do to accelerate city hall.
But if I call your attention to FY eighteen, nineteen, the outer years, you're seeing very little in that list that includes city hall. But you will start seeing replacement of flooring because you got to do that reinvestment. But operating wise, utility bills and city hall should drop hopefully four percent off of Mike's budget, you know. But that's just one of the twenty buildings. So the challenge is there's not an ongoing reinvestment. And then thirty years from now, we'll be in the same boat unless we're continuing to reinvest in city hall as well.
Okay. Anything else? Fire Station Six.
All right, Fire Station Six is...
Tab two.
Is tab two?
Yep, it's under public safety.
All right, tab two.
And on the screen, it would be line thirteen on three dash two in your notebooks.
I thought it was on tab five.
Five, sorry.
It's tab five.
Sorry.
It's tab five.
How about the work?
Five point one.
Yep.
Tab five looks like a firing range. Oh, here it is.
Hey, where are we again? I'm sorry.
Tab five.
Did we change the name?
Of Fire Station Six or of this CIP?
Of the fire station.
Yeah, I think we did. We... It used to be...
That's not catchy.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Fire Station Six has always been its reference.
That is, that is.
It has?
It makes us feel like we have six fire stations.
I just went past number five, we don't look at all like it. But the project itself is now reinvestment and it's a pool of money instead of having one for HVAC, one for windows. So that did change.
Yeah.
But do we have a summary of what actually has been done there finally?
Yes, I can give you a rundown of some of the accomplishments. The windows were replaced, which was a critical upgrade. The apparatus doors have been repaired, although there's more work desired on them. And there have been a number of critical corrective maintenance items, very esoteric things like fixing vents and fixing plumbing traps and so on that were not very sexy, but very, very critical to keep the system from... Keep the facility from further deteriorating.
So what are the big items out there?
Big items remaining out there are... HVAC is the big item remaining out there. And we...
It's a new building.
It's one of our newer...
Fifteen years old.
Yeah, but it wasn't built right to begin with.
I wasn't here, so I can't comment on that.
Okay, so fifteen years old. HVAC replacement at two hundred and fifty thousand seems a little on the high side. These windows, that's an issue.
They weren't done right.
But, you know, sewer repairs, I think if you built a building of this size and scope, you would think that the sewer... How often do you replace a sewer?
The problem...
My house is sixty-five years old, I don't think we've replaced the sewer. I mean, come on.
Ready for it.
All right, I'm moving on.
But the sewer, the sewer is actually a... The sewer is actually a spot repair. There was a settlement in the pipe and so it's a spot repair. We're not sure exactly why that happened, but we have some theories.
Gutter and downspout replacement, all right, fine.
Well, so, but, but Mr. Meeks, many of those facilities, though, as you pointed out, it is fifteen years old, HVAC systems last fifteen years. The HVAC system that was installed in that building appears not to have been appropriate for it.
Nope.
So limped along for fifteen years. But even if we... If it had been built with a more appropriate HVAC system, we'd be approaching the time to replace that, likewise gutters. So fifteen to twenty-five years is when all of your systems begin to need replacement. We're at that stage. HVAC is a very expensive system for a facility of this size. Current estimates from Arlington came in significantly above the two hundred and fifty number. We've worked out an agreement where we would contribute more than the original two fifty, but not quite the level that the county requested.
So the two fifteen and FY seventeen is combined with two hundred and fifty from FY sixteen for...
It ends up, the overall funding for HVAC from the city will be about five hundred thousand dollars. Arlington's current estimate is one and a quarter million. But we've informed them that we won't go above five hundred and they've accepted that.
Mr. Chair, can I just point out that perhaps this is an ongoing living example of value engineering from the get-go? And I think, again, we've got to be very careful in anything we do in the future. It's happened in the schools, you know, just cut, cut...
From what I understand...
You know, the materials, cut the quality, and then it ends up costing you.
And I think expertise, there may not have been the right expertise in building while it was under construction, so that's another critical thing. And so some decisions were made, like you said, Ms. Hockenberry, value engineering without fully understanding the implications.
And this was one of the first public-private partnership things that the city did, I think.
Ha, I'm not sure of that, ha.
I think so, I think so.
Following Mary Ellen Henderson, I will note they're very different because those were PPA, but they were focused on a single end product versus the complex one that's school plus economic development.
Again, it just points out, and, you know, I can even say with Henderson, value engineering, you know, it just... It's a shame because you can see the materials wearing out much quicker than they ever should be under the wear and tear. And the quality of the materials being put in, in so many cases, were just cut. And you don't have the product you should have.
Well, I think, I think that's partly true, but it's also had the facility been built with perhaps better and more appropriate systems and materials, we'd still be now beginning to talk about having to replace all of those systems. They probably would have lasted five or even ten years longer. So it would have been, they would have made it farther, but we would still be at this point, talk, beginning to at least talk about replacing those systems.
And that kind of reinforces the importance of a capital reserve and a facility reinvestment so that we're doing it as needed, not several years after it was sort of critical. I will note that these are proposed to be debt financed. All of the items are bondable. And because of the inter-jurisdictional agreement with Arlington to manage and operate, then they do the maintenance, we have some legal requirements to put at minimum one hundred and fifty thousand in. This is slightly higher based on the cost estimates that Mr. Collins worked out with Arlington.
Okay.
Anything else for general government facilities?
No, parks.
All right. Mr. Schlitt, Ms. Malte...
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And thank you for your hard work during this Snowa constrictor, whatever we're calling it. Snowmageddon. Snowzilla.
Seriously, though, Public Works, Mr. Collins, Public Works really did an admirable job. And I know they're still building Snow Mountain over on Hillwood. Unfortunately, it's can't be used with ski lifts or anything like that. Huh? I... I'm sorry, but... And we understand that the new investment in equipment was helpful in this situation too.
Yes, it was. Thank you for the kind words. I think all of you up there know, we are blessed with a very, very capable superintendent and dedicated staff that made this happen. And it was also a partnership with Mr. Schlitt and his team that kept all of this facility clear. And a number of other staff, including, it was pointed out this morning just how critical our communications office was in keeping the community informed. I think that really helped quite a bit, too.
Could I ask you one other question along those lines? I know back when I was on council, we did some investment in the facilities over the property yard for the workers when they had to stay overnight and extend it. What's the condition of all that nowadays?
They spent two to three to four nights at the facility in some level of comfort.
In somewhat comfort?
Some level.
Some level.
Barely.
Barely?
But they're tough, that's what they do. We actually had other options for them, but they're committed... We actually had other options for them, but they're committed. They wanted to stay there and be part of it.
They were fed well, I hope?
They were fed well, you know. I think it was pointed out in the news report correctly that a number of local establishments chipped in. Claire and Don's and Mike's Deli kept us afloat. Paizano's, I'm sure I'm forgetting a couple, but yeah, we had, we had, the community chipped in. It was great. It really was great. I would have preferred more sleep and a nicer weekend, but it was really a good, good event for the community.
Thank you.
All right, so Recreation and Parks. I have up here the summary sheet, which is under Tab Three. And then if you look, it's Tab Eight, I believe.
Nine, maybe?
Nine.
Eight's Transportation. Nine will be the Rexon Parks. As some quick highlights before I turn it over, the yellow one million is the land sale proceeds from the post office parking lot that was dedicated in last year's CIP towards big chimneys and transportation improvements. That's targeted for FY seventeen with the Harris Teeter project opening. They will then be able to use their traffic study that they have to, under voluntary concessions, to determine any impact, whether it's operational. And then the final decision can be made for big chimneys slash transportation improvements. As you all know, we have a lot of resources for transportation. So based on Planning Commission's directions last year, Big Chimneys is written the same way with the prioritization of funding to go towards big chimneys, unless you all wish to change that this year. And we can talk about the Downtown Public Plaza at the end, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Schlitt to talk about anything on the Howard E. Herman Park Master Plans and open space you want to highlight.
Yeah, thank you for having us here today. I don't know that there's a whole lot that I need to point out, except for the fact that we are lucky at this point to kind of have some, some nice park projects continuing to happen. And West End Park, early indications are that it was everything we expected it to be. And we talked about these ten-year projects, and that was one of those ten-year projects that we luckily got to finish and have a ribbon cutting for. But with the yellow one million dollars for recreation slash, excuse me, transportation improvements, I think we have a unique opportunity to take some of our master park improvement money and do a much-needed upgrade to our park playground equipment right out here at Cherry Hill Park to include some, some real ADA-needed pieces out there. Some pieces that we probably sorely need one way or the other, but we also have, have not been able to completely keep up with, with the new school over at Jesse Thackeray. But in, in addition to that, we also get to complete the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park to go along with a lot of the good work that Ms. Mester mentioned earlier, that Public Works got started with the daylighting over there. And again, that park is something that I'm real excited about. It's, it really turned out nice, just the piece that's done so far. So we really don't have as much that we need to do to make that look real nice. We have some amenities to put, put in. We do want to do a nice frontage sign right on Broad Street, kind of like, you know, not identical, but something that kind of draws the public's attention to it as they drive by, walk by, that happened over at West End Park. So there's some amenities and things that need to be done over there, but we don't need, we, we determined, staff looked at it and determined that because of the good work that Public Works did, we were able to take of the two hundred and forty-five thousand, if that's the right number, that was scheduled, two forty-eight, that was scheduled to be there. I think we can absolutely complete everything we needed at Howard E. Herman with one forty-eight and thus use that other hundred thousand in Cherry Hill Park to really upgrade all of that, bring some nice ADA components to it, make all the entrances, egresses to the park ADA compliant, probably a poured-in surface to make the possibility of anybody that might be using a wheelchair to get in and out, much more, much greater possibility. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited about finishing Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park and some of the amenities that we need to get in there. And now, on top of all that, with the sale of some of the property that went into the Harris Teeter, the West Broad property, we have the opportunity to potentially go into Big Chimneys Park, which we've all discussed in the past as well, is really kind of being a park that, I've always, I don't know if it's the most politically correct way to say it, but I always felt like we've been held a little bit hostage over there by all the future development that was going to take place, all the way back to the city center. That park was going to be the greatest and next, you know, wonderful thing. Well, here we are fifteen years later, and we still haven't done anything to the park because it's being, you know, it's being held by the fact that all this wonderful development's going to happen. I think we're finally there. We finally get to maybe do something over there. So I think that's the story that our CIP tells going into the future. We can have discussions about the green. I don't like the green as much as others don't like the green and the things that we need to do, but I think some of the larger projects, we can, we can get going on and hope that we can come up to, in the very near future, some better ways to deal with some of the reinvestment pieces in the master park improvement as, as we go there, the discussion that was just had in regard to facility reinvestment. We really need the same thing with our parks, but it's become a little bit more difficult. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions or anything you might have.
For the, the Cherry Hill stuff, the hundred thousand in FY seventeen, you mentioned some sort of port service. I mean, that is one of the challenges. If you're coming at the park from Park Street, they've improved that a little bit with the fence up and I don't know what that service is there, but once you get up there, then you're in the sea of routes. And so whether it's a wheelchair or a stroller or just walking, it's sort of like a minefield. Is that where we're thinking about doing a better entrance or...
No, the actual requirement to meet for ADA, we really need an ample parking area for someone that might be in a, in a wheelchair, an accessible vehicle. So what we're going to use is the little pathway that kind of goes out here on the side of the parking lot that leads out to the park. Open that up a little bit, put in, the only thing we would put in out there is some accessible handicapped parking area with the ability to turn around and get back out of there and then take the path from where it currently ends in front of the barn and around to the park. We will improve our access from park, and I'm hoping to improve maybe a pathway that might lead off of the parking lot as well. I haven't really gotten into design stuff, but the answer is, we're going to use the asphalt pathway that leads back, maybe straighten it out in an area that's a little bit difficult to get through now, but give an area to turn around and make sure we can get back out.
And then you're talking about replacing or adding to the playground equipment?
A few of the pieces that are standalone, I think we can take out and put back in. Everything else I want to, I want to replace. It's hit, it's life cycle. It's kind of, it's kind of, we've, we've got the most out of it we can and really replace. To add to that hundred thousand, we still have a little bit in our funding from fifteen and sixteen that we can, I think we've, we should have ample. It'd be nice to have more, but I think we'll have enough to do the work we need to do out there.
And then the million dollars for Big Chimneys, which I think is great, that's FY seventeen. Like, do we have a plan? Like, what we would spend that money on or what's the process for that?
Yeah, well, the master park plan, which I hope everybody's had, over, over the years has had a chance to look at, that park needs a lot of work just to get to a point where we can build a park on it. I mean, it really has some water issues, things like that. And the park plan calls for the berm right there on Annandale to be kind of cut down, open the park up to the street, which would then get rid of the bowl effect that's in there that basically just holds the water. So we've got a lot of water issues and things like that. So the million potentially, and we haven't gotten into the architecture and engineering, there's a lot of things that have to go in there, including an archaeological dig potentially on the, on the original big chimneys. So the big question on that one is, and I know that this board or the Planning Commission has talked about, is how much of that million goes to Recreation and Parks and how much goes to transportation? But this is a unique opportunity to not have to put Big Chimneys on a five-year-out plan and move it forward for five years. It's something that we potentially could go in. I guess a better direct answer to your question, I believe a million dollars will get us to a point where we can have a real park in there. It's a little bit bigger project than we did at West End, obviously much bigger than we did at Lincoln, but to get the earth moved and everything in the right place and then go in and build a park, I think a million will do it. If we end up having to share with transportation fifty-fifty, then I'm not sure we'll get there.
I think our intent all along has been for Big Chimneys to get the full million dollars. I mean, we, every year when we talk about it, that's what we say. So I don't see why you would be worried that we weren't going to get it all.
Well, I just, we don't, that answer hasn't, that...
Do we have to carve it into something, you know?
The way the council's motion set this aside was to do Big Chimneys and offset any transportation impact to the neighborhoods surrounding West Broad that wasn't covered by the result of what the developer had to address. They're fully occupied. They have, I think it's a hundred thousand, maybe off, but they have an amount of money dedicated for transportation traffic study. But I do believe, as we talked about last year, with all our transportation grants and resources, that hopefully we don't have to pull from this. We can use other resources to address any concerns there might be that we didn't forecast during the SE and site plan development.
If I could, I'd like to also say that as we plan to build Big Chimneys, it would be important for us to include some transportation pieces into that. In other words, what's the best way to get across the street to the new large building? So those pieces should be built in and maybe should be part of this project.
Right, but those aren't major. Those aren't major.
Those aren't major, but I think that they could help maybe go towards, I'm thinking, if anything, the city is going to have the, the most difficult time finding the matching funds that are required to get some of the transportation money. If included in our park project is a hundred and ten thousand dollars' worth of transportation-type things, if that money could be used to go towards that funding, then it would help us get two birds with one stone.
How much did we get from the Harris Teeter project as a proffer for that?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand?
It was fifty for a study and then a hundred for mitigation, but that's what it says in here.
Thank you for refreshing my memory.
So we did an area plan, as I'm sure you know, on this area. And one of the things that also is, touches a little bit on open space, was that this, that you had the ability to acquire additional land, and I'm not talking, this is what we were talking about the other night. So can you leverage transportation funds to connect through, even, maybe it's the purchase of, of a piece of property, but maybe it's just the purchase of an easement through Virginia Village to connect to Cavalier Trail? Can you expand open space? This is the kind of thing that is not sexy, it's not a rectangular playing field, but that really open space was intended to do. And there was always a feeling that this money was available, except the open space committee has gone wanting.
And, and if we're able to do some of those things, we can use some of the open space money that's there and not necessarily have to use, and I think that's exactly what you're saying.
Yes.
So I think there's a lot of ways we can tie this project into some of the other needs and desires of, of the community and the staff and whatever, and try to make this a huge win-win.
And it was always the hope, particularly when we did the small area plan, when we looked at this from a whole bunch of different ways, that this would be, this park would be expanded. And, and I don't necessarily mean like doubled in size and a big field goes in it. I mean, just expand it, just made better generally.
I think you highlight on a very important piece and why, I just brought up our transportation cycle again. This shows the importance of leveraging and tying grants together and maximizing our staff resources. And I know that Mr. Schlitt's already working with Mr. Stoddard on this discussion, and so parks also tie into leveraging, open space ties into leveraging because a lot of these can be connections and so forth.
My other comment would be, you know, the park is adjacent to a large commercial lot that someday may redevelop. So I don't know, when we get into the plan, if it's worth at least trying to contact that owner and see if they have any plans, just to make sure we're not...
Yeah, the bowling alley.
Just make sure that if there is some plan that no one's heard about yet, that we're not counter-planning it or doing something that's going to not fit.
And then, and then, I hear you.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to hold this hostage.
I also don't want to put anything on hold for three years.
No, I'm not saying put anything on hold. I say plow ahead. I'm just saying, if, if anything, maybe that serves as a catalyst for the development versus the other way around. I absolutely would not say wait for them. I would say, hey, we're going to do something. If you guys are thinking about doing anything, let us know. Yeah, I agree with that.
Even a little chunk of that.
Well, just who knows? I mean, you know, it's going to be adjacent to that lot, whether they redevelop or not.
Right, but as Danny mentioned, the whole idea, all this was put on hold because we were hoping, hoping, hoping. Which I hope that in discussion of the plaza might be a consideration, too. We keep hoping and letting things ride. And as we saw, this didn't, I don't think we got the best deal with the Harris Teeter project, and I know that was kind of a last-minute request from our chair.
Well, it wasn't a last-minute request. It was an early request that got tabled and became a last-minute request, but...
Well, and Mr. Rankin's point is actually very well taken. Right now, if you look, the park ends and the back wall of the bowling alley is, you know, a hundred and thirty feet away. Maybe there's the opportunity to use, you know, to, to have some additional space.
Right, right.
But even a little, even a little, a little bit. And I think that was what we were, we've been hoping. And I wish it was cooler, you know? I mean, I wish it was like a great four-acre, you know, rectangular playing field. I understand that's much more exciting, but, but I think this would be, you know, literally, even if it's eight thousand feet, I think it would help Big Chimneys. And I think that's the, that's really what we were trying to get with Harris Teeter. So any other, because I had two other park-related questions. Let's go with the stickier one first, which is the plaza, which we were able to discuss a little bit the other night when I attended the Recreation and Parks Advisory Meeting. So I don't, I'm speaking entirely for myself here. I don't know that this is where we would choose to put a plaza based on all of the locations that Mr. Stoddard had discussed and some of the other things that come up with the W and O D. So if we had five hundred and fifty thousand, I, I don't know that this is my first choice. Could you expand a little bit on, on your perspective on this plaza? And maybe the answer is, EDA is paying for it, we love it, which is, which is okay. I just, can you, anything, any light you could shed on it?
Let me just draw your attention to the book. So on nine dash eight, you have the Downtown Public Plaza description, and the EDA's preferred option behind it. And then you will have the actual grant agreement and award from the EDA with their basic conditions for the grant to include ensuring that we work with Dominion to try to move the transformer block, but not requiring the city to do it because we don't have that level of control over the Source Source Power Company. But then also, they did include funding to allow us to hire a contract manager who can manage the project and not pull off from other projects. As you noted, it is a hundred percent grant-funded. And then the last document is a letter of support from the Rexon Park Board, which will give me segue back into Mr. Schlitt to comment on this. I will note, I didn't put the whole EDA proposal in PowerPoints in here because you've seen that before, and it is available on the website, but the EDA is looking at this as really stimulating some economic development in the downtown, a little bit more than just our reinvestment of licensed sidewalks, but creating a place on publicly-owned land, which has the advantage of we already own it.
And, and yes, I believe Mr. Meeks is exactly right. I think if this was a, a situation where we were going to go in and, and talk about the best possible place to spend some available funding to create the most, the, the best possible place to put something that could be, you know, a, a vision to where the city's going to end up in twenty years and where to put this central piece and do all that, it would have gone through a different process. But the softball you threw me was, here we had someone that was willing to come in and take a small pocket park in the city that really has no real life to it or anything there, and... and say, okay, here is a design that we've got somebody to go out and put together without using any city funding. Here's a park that we're willing to build without any direct city funding, and we're willing to do this whole thing, and then, again, throw in some construction oversight. The advisory board at our meeting last month looked at that and said, let's, you know, let's, let's take it. It's not often that we have someone come in and say, let's just build a new park in this site completely from scratch and let's make it happen. So the discussion certainly, as you mentioned, could be had. I just don't, at this point, it made the most sense at the advisory board meeting that you were at for the board to quickly write a letter of recommendation and say, let's, let's move this forward.
And if I could, just acknowledge that Mr. Goff had intended to be here, but he's also still down with council right now. And he was going to be able to answer or take back any EDA questions you have, and I'll be glad to transmit any.
Well, so the question for the sixteenth that I have really is, I get all that. I mean, like, I get it, and I don't want to be difficult about it. I think if the transformer can't be moved, the thing that we think we're getting is not what we think we're getting, is issue one. So it seems to me you can't approve something that you think you're getting, but like, really, there's a big transformer right in the middle. So I think that's like a kind of the lead issue on this. The other thing is, the reason I thought this was a kind of a good idea is because it created this crossing of Route Seven. But actually, this doesn't cross Route Seven. So what I think we think we're getting is not the case on that. So I just would say that it's a wonderful proposal, I understand, but I'd just like some more information about it.
There, there are other parts of this where they do show the crossing at a future.
It's not funded, and it's not V-DOT-approved, so.
The CIP, this before you, it does not include the crossing. It is indeed a proposal that the EDA looked at and would certainly encourage. It is something that, you know, we've talked about with the street furniture, trying to get some stuff quickly and visible and good amenities. This, you want to have a little more meat to it, but you also still want to move it more expeditiously in doing the whole Route Seven, the traffic study, and the crossing was considered to be better to be a separate project. It could be something that probably with transportation funding, we could look at and add it into the workload at the time in which staff can do it.
I think there are things you want to move expeditiously. I think that figuring out this transformer issue doesn't seem like that's going to, like, really throw a complete monkey wrench in the whole thing. I mean, it seems like, that seems like a simple question to me that would be very material as to whether or not this is the best way to spend the money.
And the transformer, I think Mr. Collins can speak about, but it can certainly move. Then it, does it fit into the current dollar amount is the, is the big question.
It's, it's not as simple a question as we would like it to be. It will actually take several months to, several months to even-
Well, can we wait several months before we have to make a decision? You know what I'm saying?
That's the planning commission's determination with what you want to adopt on February twenty-second. Clearly, the EDA has put this forward. They intend and request that it be done. But it's hard to negotiate with DVP and start moving anything until you actually have a design. So it does need to proceed farther than the approximate twenty percent concept plans. And they're not going to really entertain it unless they know there's money that's coming to the table.
So if the transformer can't be moved, does that kill this project?
No, it does not. They're, they have several options. One included the alley, one didn't include the alley. The preferred option is including the alley and moving the transformer. But it could be designed around. It does change where your public seating might be. It could change if there's a water feature. And you've got to create the transformer to be some public art or somehow blend in with a three-foot radius around it so Dominion can still service it. Going to paint it with public art murals.
I was just going to say, all the kids that do the Halloween painting could come by and-
Just put one of those giant fake rocks over it.
It would change the design, but it can be done.
But this is a concept design. So if this project goes forward, do they then have to come to the planning commission to get approval of this project for a site plan?
I do anticipate that this, yes, is enough that Mr. Schneider would deem it's before the planning commission, not administrative.
Well, certainly, if they close the alley, they would have to-
It would trigger a site, it would trigger a site plan. I'm not sure how the planning, how Department of Development Services would prosecute that site plan, but it would trigger a site plan.
Well, if the alley's closed, they would have to come back to us.
What do you mean, how they would prosecute the site?
Well, actually, how they would, how they would administer it would probably be the better word.
So small site plans, you know, there's administratively by the planning director. Larger ones come to the planning commission. Often Jim has brought them to you anyway. And if indeed the alley's in and we're changing egress into that parking, that would come to the planning commission. I can check with Jim and come back to you on the sixteenth with what his thoughts are if he's considered the site plan process.
Well, and we can talk about it on the sixteenth, because I realize this is a moderately complicated question. But why can't we determine whether this transformer can be moved prior to having to make a decision in the CIP?
Because you need to do a number of studies. You need to evaluate what facilities are underground. You need to get Dominion's attention. Quite frankly, it needs to move up on their list to be something that they design. As Cindy pointed out, they won't do that unless there's money at the table.
Well, but so, but I would be-
And all of that takes time.
Okay, you have time. Why don't we do this a year from now? We'll, by then, we'll have gotten our ratings back up, and we'll do this a year from now. And you, everyone will have had time. I don't understand, like, this has become something that we have to do right away. But I don't know why we have to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I'd like to add something to this. The project, as we see it now, has been designed with various options to it.
Yes.
And so whether or not we can move the transformer is irrelevant. Because if we don't move the transformer, we go to option number two. If we can move the transformer, we go to option number one. So I don't think, I mean, I don't think that transformer makes a difference.
It, it, it makes a difference. Okay, so you go in to buy a car, and the car has all four tires and all the seats are in it, and it's got a steering wheel. And they say, you know, when we deliver you the car, it may not actually have seats or a tire, and we're a little murky on the steering wheel, but trust us, it'll work out. Why don't you take a little more time and figure out if you can get seats and tires and a steering wheel?
I think there are two responses. One would be, the EDA grant had a specific timeline on it that I don't control, and that's, you know, that was a condition, as I understand, of them funding it. Second, the second, which is more a concern for me, is the fact that I don't have anyone to do this project. I need, I don't have anybody to spend the time it takes, which is significant, to chase down Dominion and get designs done. So I can't do that until I get access to this funding and can hire a project manager to make this project happen.
So you're saying we can't figure out the moving of the transformer without the money?
Correct.
So that's why waiting a year isn't going to help, because they still won't have any money next year?
Well, but, but-
Right?
Yeah, it's, yes, it's, it requires a fair amount of manpower to track down Dominion, chase it down, manpower and time. This project, we don't have the manpower to do it. The only way this happens is with the funding there.
And to-
But you do have, you do have money within this funding, right?
Yes.
To do it.
They added, there is five hundred and fifty, which was intended to include staffing, but-
Frankly, I don't see what a problem is.
How far that gets us.
I mean, if the funding is there and we can, we can do the project either with or without a transformer, and it's being paid for by EDA, then-
I think it's a less, we're approving, I'll tell you what we're doing. We're approving something we can't unapprove once we've approved it because the EDA has spent the money to do the study. And if the plan that we think we're getting is not the plan that we end up, it's too late.
So to be clear, what you're saying is, you might like the plan if we can move the transformer, but you don't like the alternatives where the transformer doesn't move. And so if that, if we determine that the transformer couldn't move, you would wish, gosh darn it, I wish we hadn't approved it because I don't like it.
Yeah, I'd rather put it someplace else. That's thirty percent of my concern. I am also concerned about the closing of the alley, which I am not sure is a good idea, although it might be a good idea. And the whole plan, if you look at it closely, is totally different with the closing of the alley and the moving of the transformer. So although there are alternatives, there are less good alternatives and better alternatives. And I'm, I'm, I do think it's not an unreasonable question, is this really where we would put this?
Right.
If we, if we had a choice.
And presumably, if we can't move the transformer, it's a cheaper project. So either more money can be spent on something else, or they have money left over.
Transformer, moving the transformer would be very expensive. So, yeah, I think you're right. There's more money for other things.
If the transformer can't move, it's cheaper.
Well, but it does close, I mean, we're, essentially, here's what we're doing. We're agreeing that we are okay with the alley being closed, the transformer not being moved. And if you're okay with that, you could maybe convince me, and then it would be fine.
If I could comment.
We may need to approve funding to get the design done, a realistic design done for this project.
No, the designs are done.
The design's already done.
The twenty percent concept plan is not a detailed enough design, even though where we would move the transformer, let alone can we move the transformer.
All right.
So we do need to approve funds for, for that to be done. But I'm not, you know, I guess I'm confused because all of the plans that we looked at looked reasonable. And I'm not sure why we're arguing about the options right now. We just go ahead and we approve it, and have them come back to us with a design, and then we can work with them on a design.
We, we, I don't, if you read their letter, I don't, I don't think we are, I, that's optimistic that we're going to work with them on the design. I think we've approved it with we, but-
If we, this might be a question you guys know, if we didn't put it in the CIP, could the EDA, well, fund anyway the engineering to figure out the transformer move? Like, as a non-CIP thing, as just, they've got money, they spend it.
The EDA could deem to spend the operating money to do the study. But in order to have a holistic picture and have the staff who might actually implement being involved, it's currently set up so that we can hire a construction manager. So I think it would bifurcate the process. It might actually cost more. I just also want to note for the record on the alley, the five hundred and fifty thousand does not include land acquisition. So it would be a negotiation with the property owner to be willing to do that. And the traffic count that the EDA did commission a study on shows that that's the second most-used entrance in to that area, so all the traffic pattern.
Because we don't own, the alley is privately owned.
By Oshin's company.
Correct.
But, but the thought is maybe they would donate it because it could increase the value of his property.
Yeah, and they'd have opportunity for public se- I mean, there's good reasons to negotiate and think that there'd be success, but I just wanted you all to know that Mr. Shields and Mr. Goff are still working that component.
So, so just before Rob says, so we could approve it, the transformer could not move and the alley could stay there, and then we'd have some substandard pocket park?
Correct. Which, which, you could convince me, is not substandard, that really it's beautiful and we love it, and here's why.
I'm sure it'd be better than what's there now, but-
Well, for five hundred and fifty thousand, that's half of what they're talking about for Big Chimney. I mean, this little tiny thing, they should be able to do something spectacular for five hundred and fifty.
Well, okay, so I have to tell you, that was my original thought when Mike was here and when we first talked about it. Knowing what we're doing in Big Chimneys for-
Well, to be clear, we don't know what we're doing in Big Chimneys, right?
Okay, but so just think about it, just think about it, and we'll, we can leave it and pick this up again. But the price per foot of this park is getting, we could, this is a plaza on the W and O D with the Taj Mahal sitting on it.
With no latrine.
There's a basic-
No latrines.
There's a basic overhead cost just to get started. So you can't, this isn't, in actuality, half of the money that you're going to spend at Big Chimneys Park.
Understood.
Because the engineering costs are going to be in the same ballpark for Big Chimneys and this. So it eats up a proportionally larger chunk of the money.
But if we were trying to add square footage to the park system, there are probably more cost-effective ways to do it.
I think that would be true.
Not necessarily better from a, from an expeditious lawn furniture standpoint.
I suspect that's true if there was a funding source. I just call your attention back to the EDA being the funding source, and they are doing it for economic development purposes, not park or open space expansion. So they have picked the downtown plaza location because of the core intersection of the crossroads.
Right, they're not going to put five hundred and fifty K into a W and O D plaza, is it?
Yes.
And I think we just got a piece of information that makes me feel like, okay, so we're approving a project that has two big unknowns. Now, one of them, I think I was willing to, to forego because that piece of it, the transformer, we had an option to cover that part of that. But then there's this other piece of information, which is that we may or may not be able to acquire the alley, which is now, you know, becoming worrying because we're approving a project with these two unknowns attached to them.
The plans did anticipate they had contingencies for no alley, no transformer relocation. Now, again, you know, individuals may think that becomes substandard or less standard. But the designs did have contingencies for both of those. One other thing I'd note is that we could look at, in fact, I think we would look at, if maintaining that alley is important for transportation access to, and one of the stakeholders, to a critical stakeholder, whether it's the property owner or the city or anybody else, and we want to maintain that, you can do various treatments that make it a shared space so that it can be shared between vehicles accessing the parking lot and the plaza, which can, you know, so you can, I think, Mr. John, you, with your architecture background, can, have probably seen some of those that can make the park feel bigger, even while maintaining that functionality.
As long as we know what we're buying, it's okay. My, the beautiful picture that's in our very informative and handy book here in front of us shows the alley closed and the transformer moved.
You could, you could-
Now, we happen to have, I've seen the plans that aren't like this, but in the beautiful book-
You could note that you're not buying anything. Someone's buying it for you.
Well, the money's coming from somewhere.
True.
The money's coming from somewhere. It's not, it's not free.
The EDA, in their motion, did note that the option that's in the notebook is option three B. That's their preferred, but they didn't preclude the others because they knew there were going to be site constraints and utility constraints.
I, I'm not suggesting that they were trying to hide the missing steering wheel and back seats from us. Okay, fine, open space.
And I will check on the site plan.
Open space, open space. So I'm sure you're aware, there is discussion of forming a, another committee to look at open space and to do some of these transportation issues and connect to Cavalier Trail Park. It would be a pity if this were taken away from Recreation and Parks. Maybe the answer is that the open space committee needs to be expanded and include people from the EDA and the Tree Commission and Environmental Services and other people. I don't know, but you've got to get that going, I think.
Yeah, and in the city's comp plan chapter on recreation parks, the new one that was adopted, Parks for People, it did call for an expansion of that committee to include potentially some other stakeholders in the city that might help the advocacy piece of all this. Because the open space committee, as you know, has come forward with a few things that didn't, didn't happen. So I think the, I think you-
So I think the, I think you, you answered your own question. There's, there's the idea to add some more folks to it to, to help the process gain a little more speed, not speed, but.
Comprehensiveness.
There you go, thank you.
I think, just tell us what you need on that.
Okay.
I mean, Environmental Services, all these people have all this energy with tree pits and not tree pits and all the different things that come in. It just feels like we gotta get, and I, and I, and like I said, I'm not trying to. Yeah, I think that's right.
And, and I think that's right. I think we're, I mean, city, staff, volunteers, put in a lot of effort to try to figure out what is best for the city. And if, if we all had the right numbers on that powerball a few weeks ago, we could do it all. I mean, it's just that simple.
I had such plans.
And there's such.
I had such plans.
You've made a lot to the city, too.
So there's really big things coming up for the city, including, you know, 100 million-dollar projects, and so we just need to find the right possible way to get these things done. And open space is, is absolutely gotta be at the top. I mean, our, our rectangular field situation is 10 years into almost dire, and so we are to that point. We need to find some way to add to our parks, we need to find some more rectangular field space. We're not doing right by the youth of this city anymore, and a lot of us, our kids have now grown out of that, that phase, and maybe we care a little bit less, but the reality is, it's not getting any better for the young kids that are coming up. So we do have a lot of work to do.
Okay. Not seeing the schools?
Well, yeah.
Unless someone has a question or a comment?
When are we going to be hearing from the schools and about the, this 400, $4 million for, you know, it sounds like another request for money with no project behind it, because it's gonna be secret.
Yeah, so on the spreadsheet, you have the high school and middle school that you've seen before, the facility modernization I've mentioned, they asked for 400,000, there's 320,000. The new is the school land acquisition. It is similar in concept, I would say, to the open space money, where they'd have the money available to be able to respond to land, judiciously located by facilities that are in the city if they need to. As to the question about these, and the tab.
Well, we'll have to reschedule the schools, so I hate to have you go through it and then have them come back and go through it.
Rescheduling will be a challenge, because the school board is meeting on the 16th to do their budget deliberation, so the only time at this point that the superintendent would be available is on the 22nd, prior to you taking the vote.
That's okay.
And if you have any questions in advance, or, you know, additional details that you'd like, I can transmit them and help to facilitate that process.
Well, we can read through this, so I'm sure we can, we can have that. Okay, that's good. Yes, sir?
I'd like to know with all of the, all of this budget that you've, you've shown to us, if we were very optimistic and went ahead and approved most of this, what are the tax consequences to, to, to approving this budget without massage and a change in anything? The only thing that I would, I feel we need to look at, well, I need to look at as well is the, the money for, for maintenance, for public works. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we add money to it and if we approve this, what is the tax implication for the citizens of Falls Church? I don't know if, if you have an idea.
For just the facilities, you're basically looking just under a penny. If you were to do the transportation, CIE equivalent to leverage our MBTA money, that's two cents, so you'd be looking at three cents. And then you'd probably be four cents, four and a half, if you were to add the park master plan money. Just at a quick review, but I can do a more, that's just FY '17, I can do a more detailed analysis.
So that would be about seven or eight?
Four and a half cents. Four and a half cents to cover facility reinvestment, Rexon Park, and MBTA 30%, for FY '17. Theoretically, if that continued, then you would be addressing those in the multiple years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I'll just close this very fun thing by saying, you know what we found? We're kind of cleaning up. So in, when the field, when the turf field first opened, my son Bennett was one of the kids who carried the ribbon. He would have been, I think, six, and he got a coin, and there's a picture of him standing there, his little toe, we just found that, we just found that this past weekend. So it's very exciting.
Just proves that community investment's an ongoing, and you need to keep doing it.
Yep. So thank you very much. We're already adjourned, but thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, and I'll be back on the 16th.